All right, it's 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, may I have a roll call at the establishment of the court?
Isaiah Earl.
Here.
Mary Beth.
Here.
Barb Scott.
Here.
Mike Wagner.
Here.
Matt Crowe. Dylan Ammstein.
Here.
And I'm here as well.
Okay, approval posting, please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. I was ready to say back.
Yeah.
And no public input? So, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of October 28th, 2024?
So, second.
Any questions on that? Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. 3.2, do I have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements listed?
So moved.
Oh, so good. I know we're missing our...
I know, I'm like, spit it out.
I know. Does anybody have any questions on any of those? Uh, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Um, I just want to give kudos and credits to everybody involved in the Veterans Day Parade today. It's not a parade.
Was it a parade? Is that a parade?
Although they did parade with the flags. Um, but it was, it's an amazing community opportunity and to see so many of our local vets. Um, and the students were so well behaved and I think that'll let out a bit. Um, a personal touch this year and I was so impressed by the kids and how many songs they memorized. But it was just a tremendous, um, opportunity to give thanks to our service members. And I also just want to make note that, um, Michelle and I met with Steve and Brad, um, from Sun Prairie, who will be facilitating and guiding our strategic planning work. And so we went through, um, just kind of a very brief overview of what the process is going to look like. Um, and setting up our first meeting will be important. Um, and very similar correlation to the future surge work, um, where we'll, we'll be, um, leading on and leaning on our fellow community members to help in that process and really be the stewards of the work as we kind of sit back and know that we were, um, voted into our roles to do the work of the taxpayers. Let this be the, the opportunity that they can voice and give, um, their voice to our, our vision and goals and priorities. So, we're going to set that up in December, um, and then the work will begin in that. So, that's all I have.
Fantastic. All right. Should I go next?
Yeah, sure.
Um, well, you stole my thunder with the fact that you said...
No, you said that was your...
I didn't introduce you well because I called it a parade, so...
No, I was, just one more quick thing, just there's so many people that work so hard to put on that program at the elementary, middle, and high school. So that was really neat, just to see all the buildings come together and really celebrate a veteran. So, excited for that. A couple just highlight things. We met, um, as a committee to, we're revising the staff handbook, long time coming. So we had our first meeting and we're all taking different parts and going to be continuing to work on that for the next several months. Bev is leading the charge of that, so she's been doing a great job. Um, around school safety, we had our emergency response drill the other day and it went, um, went really well, learned a lot. We'll continue to tweak those different pieces of that. We did our reunification training as well. And, um, lastly, I met with the bus company this last Thursday with Melissa Winters and I did to talk about income and weather plans. So, I know, right? That's the toughest job of the superintendent. I know, right? Your first winter of your bell room. Is he calling off the days or anything? So, we're gearing up for that. A couple positive things with, um, community relations. Barb and I had the chance to meet with Black Earth Meso leaders and it really, like, apparently had they had done that in the past, so we're going to start doing that in the upcoming future, about quarterly, I believe. So, um, and as well as bringing some of the presidents and so forth from the different...
Clerks.
Clerks from the other villages as well, so, and townships. So excited about that. Had a chance to meet, to talk about, so Marissa Bode, one of our alumni, as some of you know, is, she's going to be in Wicked that comes out in November.
B-O-D-E.
B-O-D-E?
That's what was confusing.
Sorry, spelled it wrong. B-O-D-E. Um, and... Thank you. Right, and we're, right when you come in, we're going to do a display that has the movie poster and her Barbie and her Lego set and all of those things. So, really excited to showcase her and then hopefully in the spring do, or we've been talking about doing a movie out on the football field for a long time. And so we're hoping then possibly doing that one for the community. Doing some fun things around that. So, that, that's all, I have lots of things I'll be talking about later today, so we'll just start with that. Yeah, and I'll just echo again, um, you know, we've talked about the opportunities because of a one-site campus, pre-K to 12, and so that is a perfect example of, you had the elementary kiddos singing, you had the middle school, high school students up in the stands, you had plenty of community members and parents, and it really truly felt like a community spirit, um, event. So, yes, well done to everybody that did work. Oh, yes.
Um, I, a lot of the veterans today were thankful for how well put together it was. So, um, also thanks to them for coming, I think, because it was great for so many of those folks to come in and demonstrate with services. For the committees, when you say committee on the staff side, who's usually involved? Is it like admin only or does it include faculty and support staff?
So, for the veterans program?
Nope, I'm sorry, for like the handbook.
So, right now, we have represented this from different pieces of the school community. So administrators, um, we have a teacher, we have support staff, Bev, who else am I missing? Melissa from co-curricular standpoint? Anyone else? And then Dylan Kelly.
Yeah.
So that was admin, yeah. So we tried to get representatives from different groups. And so what we, what Bev did is we divided it up, the handbook, and then people are taking those pieces of their handbook and then meeting with their fellow, you know, so for example, um, Melissa has the one on co-curriculars. So she's taking that piece, meeting with coaches and admin folks around those spaces to get input. And then when we come back as a committee, she'll share, here's what I learned, here's where we made some changes. So it's not just the committee, the, their task to get some input from other folks. Is there any way that that can be structured more? Or I, I mean, I think we talked about just the co-curricular handbook in general is kind of this ideal of like, oh, there's going to be a task force and we're getting people here and here and it's going to be this great undertaking. And I'm just thinking, um, kind of in the same conversation piece with the football arena where you say, you got feedback, who's it from? Like, is there, is there some structure to it that you at least know there's ample representation and these are the people that gave the input? Or is it really just not that formal? Well, first, we took, we were working from the DMSB, the School Boards Association, they're, so they send out a template of, here are the changes, here's what needs to go in the handbook. So our first task really is, to be honest, take her, her current handbook, which is pretty out of date, and just make it so it reflects what's current policy and statute, to be honest. That's like the biggest piece right now. And then unfortunately, we don't necessarily, we didn't give them a structure like you have to meet with these 10 people or whatever, but I'm also meeting with the Federation and they know that that's going to be a piece that we're going to talk about, are those same pieces. So, um, we can definitely look into that.
The Federation gave us the representative that they wanted.
Okay, so, and that's sufficient?
One thing, just for thought, you know, and it's, it's your administration and everything, but I feel like, you know, it is so out of date because we didn't have like a process for updating it on a regular basis. And so I, I think it would be good for us to think about creating sort of a muscle memory process that is repeated every year or every two years for it. So then people can also expect that the, these questions will come back up of, of why about the handbook, do you think should be addressed?
Yeah.
Um, because then in the middle of the year, when that conversation doesn't happen and somebody thinks about it, they'll know, well, maybe next November, December, it'll come back up type process. Uh, and that's why I think having that more structured system makes more sense, especially from a board perspective, just so that we can rely on, well, the last time we did it was this structure and that's what staff are expecting, that's what administration are expecting for that type of stuff.
No, that makes perfect sense. And I believe, you know, what we currently have with all the different pieces, you know, from our school community represented at the table, I think that's really important. So, I mean, it makes perfect sense to put some structure in place so every year annually we're looking at that handbook, making sure it's not only, you know, following the state statute, all the things we need to be doing, but also just getting input, like you said.
But we do do that. We have done that over the last couple of years. Every year we would meet as an admin, me, Jordan, Dale, a couple of people, to go over anything that we got from input from the staff. And we kept a running list of that throughout the year. And then when we started our meetings in January, February, we took all those things into consideration and implemented what we could. And that's where a lot of the changes for like an additional sick day or something like that came from. So, I mean, we have been doing that over the course of the years.
I have curiosity, because I don't know. Um, do you, do the staff feel and do coaches feel like that's a process that they're aware of and that like is open for them to?
Out of that, it's been in place for a long time, so I have to...
Yeah, they've had, they typically do multiple opportunities to give back because there's, Bev does a nice job of even reminding emails, hey, you know, please provide feedback, here's a link. And I know our staff meetings, we've encouraged our, our teachers over the years, you know, we have questions, but, yeah, it's been a pretty open process. And, uh, and we have made a lot of changes to that then over the year. Every year there's adjustments. Usually it's something, it typically does come from somebody's idea, like, or just a clarification, what is this exactly, oh, we need to clean that up. So we, we fix it. This process is...
Could we do a better job? Yes, we probably could make sure, because we have new staff. I don't know if we communicated to the new staff, so yes, there's probably improvements we can make. Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly, yeah. That's right, we have a chair.
Well, I wanted to highlight a new program that we're doing, which is heart math, which has absolutely nothing to do with math, so I don't know if I'm misleading. Um, but it's always important to try to find research-based strategies to help teach kids how to regulate their emotions and their social needs and things like that. So in this program, they actually hook up a little sensor to their finger, they can check with their breathing, you can play video games and control it, you can control your heart rate. It shows kids how much control they can have over their own regulation, um, through a couple of low-tech and high-tech systems. So anxious and excited to see how it turns out because I think it's, um, just a way of another avenue to tap into what kids want to learn and what they need to learn, so. Um, and I know you've talked a lot about the subbing challenges, so I was looking more into that because I really thought I wanted to put some numbers to see, well, how media is happening in our district, especially when I'm looking at special education, because those services are so, um, legally mandated. When we have adults out, that's really tricky. So even, for example, when we've had 67 times where an EA has, like, EAs have taken off a half day or full day and only 29 of those times have been filled, it puts a lot of pressure on our special education systems to make up for those needs. So those were two of the main things I wanted to highlight. Um, any other questions about things that I covered in the report?
I have a bigger question.
I have...
That's not from your report.
It's not from my report and I think Derek will get us started on the conversation today and then I can add more to it.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I'll just preface in saying, we have to be mindful of the conversations we have as they're applicable to the reports and the agendas and that there's ample avenues to have in-depth conversation. I mean, you don't hurt one of us. Um, if there's certain answers that you need, you know, outside the arena, but it's a slippery slope of...
This, I think, I understand what you're saying, but I also think this is something the whole district needs to be prepared for considering it could happen.
And that's totally fine. It just needs to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So if that's, if that's something that, that needs and warrants more information and data, then it can go on the next agenda and that can be an item of discussion if it, if it works. Just being mindful of that procedure. Thanks, Kelly. Hey, Dylan.
Hi, everyone. Uh, we got my board report. I'm just, I'm going to focus on Act 20, just started our process there. We have our plan in place. One of the things that's been for us though is, is syncing it with Next Pat Education, which is, I briefly mentioned that in the past. We're really aligning what we're going to be doing with our, um, reading screeners and then our diagnostic, which will sync to our letters that will go home to parents and all the data will go home, um, to parents, actually, we'll, we'll have a click button that will send them down and send the, the letters home. Parents can click acknowledgements that they have it. So that system itself should help us out a ton, which is being more efficient and we'll be able to do our record-keeping piece. Then when you'd asked about ELSTU, it's really a non-issue for us, so like, you know, measure that, we have two students. We can really individually plan in place for those kids. That is a huge issue for some of our districts, though. That language barrier within that, but for us, it was a non-issue. I did talk with the interventions a little bit about that and they've already had those conversations about those two kids and, um, what we need to do with that, and we have plans in place for that. So really a non-issue for us.
Two students?
Two third graders. We have seven district-wide, but two third graders, I think, are in the building. Also, Isaiah, just, I don't know if you clicked on the link, but I did get the ACP calendar there.
Yeah, please, thank you so much.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a rough draft format, but it's a start. And so we're just trying to lay out the things that we're doing so if we go on a trip or the thing, and so we're building it as we go. I wanted to let you know, uh, have that in there too. Any questions for me?
See career fair on February 13th?
That's the target date, so...
I see that! Woo!
That was the big thing, just getting, getting a date on the calendar and so we start some of our, um, neighboring school districts have some information and so that will move forward.
And I'll just say that, um, that was a topic that we brought up at, uh, the meeting with the, the village reps too and saying really the chambers can contribute and really this is a community event of, of businesses and kind of locally how we can bring people together, so...
More like a, a time to meet and talk, or do that, yeah, I'll just basically, for sure.
Great opportunity. Looking forward to my invite.
One of the things I hear is like, I didn't see it, um, just when the scholarships open for kids because that's like, you know, there's going to be a gap or them, so, that's, I know you're probably working on it, but I'm just...
Yep, we have some initial conversations. I have seen a rough draft of the booklet, so that's coming. So they are working on that piece for now from the council department. Thank you. Anything else?
That's perfect.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Dylan, thank you.
Thank you so much for this, by the way. You're welcome.
Eric?
So, my report is pretty short and to the point this month, as usual. Um, just kind of, we have year-to-date costs. Nothing is trending out of line from the budget that was just presented at the annual meeting and budget meeting. We're still in line, two weeks we haven't blown it up, so that's great. Some of the work completed is kind of prepping for that, prepping tax levy information and just kind of working on all of that and getting that filed and all the reporting done related to that. Along with kind of some of the salary analysis work that, uh, Michelle and I have been doing. Then kind of working on, just kind of now the next things on, kind of rolling into the year are starting to think ahead to next year's budget already and kind of budget monitoring and budget kind of work on the next year's budget. So, monitor the current year, look at next year, look ahead, and then kind of what are the changes that are happening that we have to kind of be aware of and might impact our next budget, which is DPI's budget, where they're trying to increase the special ed reimbursement rate to 60%, which for us would be roughly a half million dollar or more kind of operational dollars, which would be great. That would help in a lot of areas. And then kind of just being aware of the different changes that are happening federally and kind of what that means to kind of our federal grants, which are title grants and our special ed federal grants. We're aware of those, we're kind of monitoring the changes and we'll adjust our budgeting process as those things happen and roll out that we know are a non-issue. Any questions?
I think it would be helpful to have a committee meeting on the, both the DPI possible changes and the Department of Education possible changes and how those would impact our budget, just so we're aware before.
As far as changes go with like, if we're turning it into block grants for the state or if they're just maintaining funding levels or just in general?
Those questions are kind of what are, am I, yeah?
No, that's a great question, that's a great question.
And, and what scale of the finances in our budget would be connected to those changes?
So can that, does that have to be a committee meeting or can that be something that he presents on, that he can see?
Just another, yeah.
Right?
Official board agenda schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we probably just put that in the, in the agenda.
It'll just be like a, a budget update regarding DPI.
Do you feel like they have a pretty good handle on the numbers or is it still very, very speculative?
I think it's very speculative at this point. I think also DPI's budget might, depending on who wins, the kind of super state to win the election also may see changes with how they work with the kind of legislature and also representees as well, so. I think it's very early at this point and they have a budget out there, but it, as always, is subject to change.
So maybe adding that and seeing how the funds flow, kind of talking about that because we know what's coming, when it comes, right?
So when do you think the target date, what do you think, a little bit?
We can do it anytime, but then we just know, like, here's when it starts to all range. And then as we hear more info, this is how it will change and here's when it will change.
Would you prefer to wait a little bit till we have more information or...
I would say like first quarter of the new year at least.
Yeah, February, maybe?
Sure. Just to give us an understanding of where it moves from, just so we know when, if and when something happens, then we know.
If it's good, if it's bad.
Right, right.
Yeah. Do you?
My phone.
Yeah. I like, I like this arena because then it'll be something that the public can jump in and certainly...
Yeah, you kind of see where everything's kind of flowing and then...
Yeah.
Kind of see what happens when things change too. Kind of keeps them updated too, to see, you know, this is kind of where we're at, but then they can see that when something changes, this is what happens. When you have those significant changes, this is how it affects everything too. So, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
We didn't have an overabundance of attendees at our annual meeting. It's an opportunity for legal to see how things affect our budget.
Right, I didn't find that.
Any questions for Derek? All right. Thanks, Derek. Thank you. Good questions. And then, um, Liz and Melissa and Sarah are not in attendance, but if you have any questions on their reports, um, Michelle could give a go at any of the line item things on their reports if you have certain questions about any of it. Otherwise, we will move on. Dylan? Yep.
The one thing I wanted to ask Melissa that's kind of not really on here, I guess it's not on here, I can probably just follow up on it.
Yes, you probably should.
No, I'll just follow up on it. The thing is, is like, when, one of the things that's been sorely missing, I think, over the past how many years, is like, where are like our academic awards for our athletes? Because that's just something that's just not existed. And that's one of those things I was hoping to ask for, like, when are we getting back in the habit of doing those? Because we've got a lot of good scholar athletes. So it's just trying to figure it out, okay? Are those going to be back?
That's a great question. Ema, Melissa, C.C., Michelle.
Absolutely, absolutely. Just a good one.
Just for next time, she's here, um, hearing more about the sportsmanship camp, that would be nice. Just would be cool to hear what it is.
More detail.
Yeah.
And if there's anything concrete, highlight something and, yeah, when you can always talk about it in the next meeting, I think it'll worry them that it'll be coming. All right. Moving on, district business, 5.1, our facilities and transportation chair has, has a... I can help you out.
No, we, basically, we talked a lot about the, um, for, you know, getting some forms filled out for the, the different clubs and all the people that use the facilities, kind of getting a, I guess a structure too, like, if there's going to be fees attached to it, who would get fees, um, stuff like that. Also talked about like if they're using equipment versus not using any of our equipment. That's like the nets, you know, the batting cages and all that kind of stuff. And then updated, kind of like settled the policy lingo and stuff like that. So, yeah, it was a good conversation.
And I think the big thing is, is our, our policy wasn't necessarily out, out of date, but the follow-through and compliance, upkeep on the policy with what was lacking. But it was a good conversation just to kind of go through what we have and some minor updates and, and really, I mean, the one, the big part that we've been talking about for months is the doors locking and that they won't just be a free-for-all, which I know will be a change for a lot of people, but, um, there's going to have to be a structure in place of knowing who is coming and going in our buildings at all hours of the day. And that doesn't mean that there's necessarily more restrictions, but just some formality to knowing who, um, is in the building. And so that'll be a change, but again, maybe something to add to the non-compliance list because we're the only school in Dayton that, that the doors open from, you know. So, that'll be a change. And then, yeah, it's pretty much just kind of revisiting some of those areas where we've seen maybe some of our equipment, um, fail us sooner than, than normal and the implications on, um, the athletic budgets because they're using the same basketballs and, you know, so how do we kind of grapple with making it fair and equitable to the groups that, that want to use it? It's a community space and we want to open it to the community, but there has to be some, some formality to that. And so that's really what this is. And if you'll, well, it's, it's an agenda item, so we will. Well done, Mike. Any questions on that?
I have three questions, sort of related to facilities. I don't know if you know the answer to these, Mike, probably you have.
Well, this is, and this is regarding the, you were at the facilities in triathlon. You're on, you were there.
Of course, it's about the facility, right? Oh, I see what you're asking.
Is it regarding the policy?
It's not regarding the policy, you say.
Oh, okay, then.
Well, it's indirectly regarding the policy. So, well, one of, one of us is about policy, actually, one of us is about policy. And with youth sports coming on, with basketball season, youth sports coming on, the locked door, the actual physical locked doors of the gyms are a problem because people don't have physical keys to get into them. So I'd have to work with Melissa or maybe more likely work with Melissa on how to best navigate that because, I mean, we're not going to check out...
Wait, say that again?
We don't have a physical key to get into this gym or that gym.
Oh, because the gyms are...
The gym doors are locked.
The gyms are official.
And until, and until they get this, until they get the thobs done.
Yeah.
So there, there's like this intermediate period that we're trying to figure out.
In our admin team meeting, we're on that.
Oh, perfect, awesome, thank you.
So, we didn't think we needed your approval to get, to spend that money to get those protectors out the doors. We're just going to get those ordered.
Yeah, awesome.
So, yeah, that simplifies everything.
That was dumb. Wow. I appreciate me, huh? And then...
Yeah, that was all the chair. Yeah.
And then the indirect one is, well, I'll ask you a one at every time. That's good, that's good.
So, then moving on to our district business policies of today is the changes to 7510, the use of district facilities. So I'll ask for, um, a motion to approve the changes to policy 7510, use of district facilities.
Make that motion.
I do have, um, a question.
Is there a second thing?
Okay.
Okay.
I do have a question. So, as I was looking through the calendar, the athletics calendar of different groups that currently use the facilities, primarily the gyms, there are two groups that kind of stuck out at me that I know that are not school-related activity or school-related clubs, nor are they youth, you know, like club organizations. And so as I'm reading through the policy, you know, it talks about having insurance and that sort of thing. And these are repeating clubs. And I know that at least one of these is a family and I'm pretty sure, and so is the other one. So my question is, do they need to carry this insurance policy? Because I know that they are here all the time. So do they have this insurance?
Well, that's part of the change.
Check it out, you have to.
Yeah. Well, this is part of the.
So I'm just asking because.
Is this part of the, that has always been policy, so our policy has not been out of date, we're not compliant, it's just we haven't followed through with it. So that is part of the update and saying we are.
So I'm just wondering if, if like Melissa, whoever, are going to go through and check all of these to make sure that they are.
Yes, she has.
Yeah, because my group, my group, like I check it out all the time.
Okay. Because I just, I, I just want to make sure that some of these aren't like, just being like, mm, you know, wanna, right? Like, oh, it's a Sunday, it doesn't matter, you know, whatever.
That's exactly why we're revisiting this.
Okay, good. I was just kind of like, and then I was like, I was just wondering, I'm like reading through and I'm like, okay, am I just, am I reading this correctly? I'm like, do they not quite fit, you know, so I was just trying to figure out like, am I reading it right? You know, do they fit in the right, you know, so I was like, so, like, no.
Yeah, well, technically, if, so everyone that is going to be using our facility, a representative of their organization has to do a mandatory meeting with Melissa and I, so we're in the stages of planning that I think it's going to be December third. But then we'll go through all the stipulations and things. But if there's any organization that feels that they deserve an exemption, that they don't need to have any of those things, insurance, the fee, they can petition that there's an exemption fee that they can fill out that will be brought to the board and they can ask for an exemption if they think they deserve one.
They can ask for an exemption to the insurance policy?
No, just to the fee.
Just, just on the fee.
Yes. So you have to have insurance policy, but like if they don't believe they should have paid one.
So here's another question. What about a photographer for senior pictures?
So we had that conversation. So what would happen is if it's a senior, the senior would, their family would check out the facility. So they don't need any of those specifics.
Okay, gotcha.
So she's just coming in.
Just to take photos that one specific time and it's not like you're physically like using, like you're just here to take pictures and then whatever. Okay, all right. Okay, all right, gotcha.
And, and the second piece is purposeful because it, it gets into the weeds of, well, okay, let's, we have a club team.
Yeah.
And maybe it's sponsored by, let's, a heights coach.
Right.
But half the team are heights kids, half the team are, we have a club team, that's all heights kids, we have a club team, there's only one heights. We, I mean, there's so many different possibilities.
Right, and that's why, and when I was reading through here, that's why I brought up the activities calendar. Because I was like, I know that there's so many different like organizations and like all these like different clubs. And then I know that there's like, you know, clubs that aren't affiliated with heights in some way, whether it be youth or high school or middle school. And I was going through here and I'm like, wow, I'm like, I know there are few in here that aren't, you know, associated in any way. So I was like looking through here and I was like, okay, I'm like, I'm not quite sure. I was just like, okay, all right, that makes sense. Okay, good to know, thank you.
And in those instances, we'll come to the board.
Gotcha.
And.
All right.
And, and really the list, the all encompassing list of organizations that check out the gym isn't more than twenty-ish. So we're not talking about hundreds.
Right, yeah, there's not like we have a hundred different clubs and stuff.
And many of those individual groups use it maybe a couple times a year or something. So this really is just, it's, it's a change because we're enforcing some of the policies that's always been in place, but keeping avenue for exemptions and those conversations. And we've said that this is, you know, it's a learning experience too. If, if the doors are locked and we're running into challenges, it doesn't mean that things can't be adopted and changed, but we got to start somewhere and keep the building safe.
Well, yeah, definitely. I mean, it's, it's just like a business.
Right.
You have to, you have to keep your business safe and keep your business entire.
So you said there were too many changes. Can you speak to what like you've been tweaking this policy though?
I can tell you, yeah, we've got the lines. So the, the things that were tweaked is when it comes to the district, so on the third page, so disregard for regulations governing facility use, there used to be like first, second, third, fourth offense, all the things. Now it's just the first, we get a verbal warning and then the second time it could be restricted or loss of use and then that's where it ends. And we'll keep that list, we'll keep that going so we know exactly what's happened. And then on the last page, we added some access cards, letter I, so instead of keys, so the, the joke was, I think everyone in, every village in town should have a key to a building. So we are having, going to, to stop so they have to actually access. So then, well, we're getting all the doors rewired. So we'll know who's accessing the building. So you'll check out a fab to access the building at a certain time. It'll say you can come in from seven to nine, whatever. And then we'll have those on the gym entrances as well as the weight room entrances. So then we'll know who's going into those. And then there's, the other thing was K, L, and M. That's with the mandatory meeting that we're going to have the safety protocols that we put in place and the checklist. So we have, you've seen our listed new safety protocols. So they, there's a checklist that they'll also be given that they have to adhere to all of our new safety protocols and then the liability insurance. And like Barbara said, we've always had the liability insurance, but we're just highlighting that again for folks. And then we have, which isn't in policy, we have a whole bunch of application forms. So there used to be, the facilities application used to be in the policy as a part of it. We took that out and just made it its own application. And then we have a facility fee exemption that we just talked about. And then we have an equipment use application. So those are the changes.
Just by expectation wise for that list of offenses, is that going to be something only administration sees? Or like when it comes to the board for a fee exemption or anything, would we get to see if they've had a violation in the past?
Yeah. I mean, I think that goes into that conversation.
And then with the verbal warning, will then the administrator that delivers the verbal warning write down in a record that they did it? Okay.
Yes.
They won't receive that written record that we gave you a verbal warning though?
They'll get some sort of written record of it as well.
Okay.
So there'll be documentation and a, so it's, yes, we have a written document.
What about just the training? Do, do, does that expire for someone or a group? Like you, you were trained three years ago, so we need you to go through the training again?
Right now Melissa and I, Ms. Winters and I plan to do it annually just because there probably will be some changes. We'd love to say that nothing's going to change, but I'm sure there'll be changes even until next year. So we'll do it annually until we see different, you know, we think it's, can be every three years or something.
So the way to read that is you have, you get trained for access for one year and then you're going to be expected to do the next year's training?
Correct. So we have this starting January first, all the new policies, the procedures. So then next year, starting in the new year, January first, you'd have to do another one in order to access them post-January first.
Okay.
And I could foresee, I mean, having some sort of community event where it's like, if you have a fab in order, you know, like we can do it on Wednesday where everybody's trained at once and, you know, it's not setting up, and then we'll need you if that's not. Yeah, and, and we'll probably, we'll, I'm most certain we'll have a recording as well, so they can, there'll be a virtual option eventually too, so.
We're really trying to make sure everybody still has access to it, to this, not that we're trying to restrict it. I think it's just we got to follow some of these procedures and make sure things end with these.
And the liability of the district, like we've talked about, is if, if somebody has children in this building and there's a tornado, a fire, I mean, there is everable, there's rules and regulations about those.
So your question, the virtual training made me think, is there a way we verify that they've received the information and understand the training if there is going to be virtual or even if they're in person and they weren't on their phone during the event, you know?
Well, that's your hope, right? Like a lot of virtual trains I've gone to, you have to just, it's like a box saying I certify that I've watched and I understand the material presented and then a lot, yeah. If you take the virtual option, they have to pass a test. Well, I mean.
Is that, just putting that, is that absurd to expect for a virtual training? I, I know that we don't want to restrict it and I'm not saying the questions need to be, you know, lawyerly questions, SAT questions or anything, but I do think that there should be some level of, you did know where to send people for the tornado, you know?
Yes, right.
And you do know how to ensure the door closed behind you, it was not, you know?
And so what happens technically, when someone wants to use the building, they still have to come in, meet with Melissa to get those fobs to all of the things. So at that point, we could have a, you know, a follow-up conversation to be like, oh, it says you did the virtual training. We could come up with a list of questions.
Just quick questions.
Three questions.
That's a great idea.
In order to get your.
Yep. I think that's reasonable.
I think that's.
A virtual quiz of some sort or a Google doc or Google form that goes with it.
Nothing crazy, I totally agree with that.
Just general questions, common sense questions.
Yeah, right.
Just so you're paying attention.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that. The only thing I'm wondering about is, is like those list of offenses, like what is reasonable? Because I know that some people's version of like you have broken all the rules is you didn't change the garbage. And other people's is you actually marred the floor or something. So it's like, what is that happy medium? Because I've been accosted for not changing the garbage.
Yeah.
I know we anticipated it'll be something like that, so. I think there needs to be an element of trust in our administration and administering this policy. And really the undertone is, it's a privilege to use this space. And with privilege comes responsibility and that you know the rules and yes, if you, you know, forget to take, it's not like you're done and doomed. I, but that comes with trust and time and that's going to be hard for people because I think.
Well, I would actually like to answer that, not change the garbage.
Right. And certainly there's the element of, well, if, if there's a, a community organization that maybe is on the list and it comes to us and then we look and we're like, Michelle, did we really have to put them on the naughty list for not taking up, like, and then, yeah. It opens the door for conversation. So there isn't, it's not an end-all-be-all, they can never use the gym again. So there's steps. Our goal is to work with the community and bring people here down to put up barriers, so.
Yep. Okay, then.
Anything else? No. Okay, Isaiah? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. On to six point two, do I have a motion to approve changes to policy eight-six-six-zero, transportation by private vehicle?
So.
Second.
Any questions regarding this policy? Really? You're not staying till the end?
We were happy to have you for half an hour.
Look at it.
Man.
One of the groups that uses this building.
I know.
We have bad reception.
I was going to give a community a plug to the community band, I figured that's fine. We have fobs to go around. We have to come and meet.
Oh, now they won't, now they won't let you out.
All right, any questions on this? Just some minor updates as far as this policy goes? Okay, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Seven point one, do I have a motion to approve a change to the employee manual regarding teaching substitutes to be paid for hours worked and substitute licensure reimbursement?
So.
I'll second.
And this is one of those creative solutions to a problem in, in that, you know, in some periods of the day, we, we just need a sub for two hours, three hours, and they didn't quite fit the criteria of a half day or full day, even a six-hour contribution. But it, it's just seems reasonable to open it up to an hourly option to fill in those gaps when necessary, but also not wasting people's time and saying, well, we need you for five, but now you have to stay until eight because you're a full day. I mean, it's just one of those. And it increases the hourly. Right, and we're increasing the.
Just right off of that too, right? There's no step up after the five days? Is that concept gone basically?
We get rid of that.
Yeah.
It's easy for.
If you're substituted.
And, you know, honestly, this is probably something that fits into a regular conversation of the budget and the needs and, and where we're at. So hopefully a more reoccurring conversation.
Can I just ask a question?
No.
No, 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 this isn't, this isn't anything. So I have a, so I have a friend who is a teacher in Hillsborough. And I was just kind of baffled because they never hire substitutes that are retired teachers from their own district. Is there a reason for that?
Well, it depends, it depends, are they immediately retired from the district? They're going to next year or like long term?
They've been, it's, it's both. Like it's been, they've had teachers that have retired fifteen years ago. They've also had teachers that retired two, three years ago. And so I was just curious, like if we've, if anybody's ever heard of that before.
They can send some our way.
I know that, I said, I was like, they have a lot.
Surely when you retire from teaching, you don't run back into the building, you stay, you retire.
Well, they have, like, they have a lot that would love to sub, but they don't want to sub to different districts. I was just curious. I was just curious. I was like, I've never heard of that before.
Those are some of your best subs.
I know, I was like, hey, I was like, hmm, I'm like, do they want you, they like driving? Anyways.
So is this pretty comfortable with our strong instincts, would you say?
I think it's great that y'all saw we were hoping to change and it happened so quickly. Really, I mean, it's really great to see you all act quick on it.
And, you know, just like Kelly said, it really changes things on a daily basis. So sometimes, yeah. Just give people hope. Any other questions? Okay, you're done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Eight point one, do I have a motion to approve to no longer Zoom board meetings?
Second.
And this was kind of born, I think administratively, of one of those things of, it's not a customary tradition that school districts are doing this anymore. And it was kind of one of those, well, I don't have a good reason not to or to. It's kind of one of those, you know, again, it's more administrative work and time and energy. And as I've learned, we do our due diligence and go above and beyond many other schools in actually keeping a live archive of our meetings. And so, yes, people can't, it's not on the spot, but we post it and people can watch it live tomorrow, you know, so. We, we still will keep the option open for board members though. And so if you can't be here or you're offsite, we can do that. Traveling the world. But it's a silver lining, it's not a, but just on a routine basis, especially when I was not here or something, and we're like, oh, we don't, you know, know what to do. So just to simplify matters a little. Any questions? Okay. You're done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Nine point one, do I have a motion to approve a donation of a popcorn machine valued at six hundred and thirty-four dollars from the Wisconsin Heights Youth Basketball Program to the Athletics Department?
Who?
Second.
That is awesome. And like I joked, like we better be seeing a lot of popcorn in that concession stand. Right, see me serve it up?
Only one will get to her.
I think, I can handle that. So that's awesome. Thank you to the Youth Basketball Program for that donation.
It was earlier last year.
Absolutely, yeah. Popcorn's a staple, so.
Yeah, definitely noticed.
They've got, their knowledge are organized, they've got quite a lot of hands on deck and lots of understanding.
That's going to be a good, good use of her list.
Yes.
So there's more to come, is that a?
I don't want to be rude.
Okay, you're done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Ten point one, do I have a motion to approve the hire of Sean Williams as the strength and conditioning coach?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Many thanks to Sean for taking on that endeavor and ensuring that opportunity exists for our students. That's awesome. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Is anybody opposed to combining these or are there certain questions?
No, I'm just.
Okay, do I have a motion to combine eleven point one to eleven point three?
Second.
Any questions on any of those? All right, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you. Well, eleven point two, thank you.
Oh, yes, and I should highlight. I should highlight the approval for an assistant middle school student council advisor to help have out with her. Thirty, thirty. Growing, it seems like, children interested in student council and, you know, we've said it a bunch, but from going from not having a high school student council to now having a vibrant, thriving program, that's definitely. Goes to the advisor role and what you're doing and now getting some help. So that's awesome. And future meeting dates, we just discussed trying to figure out a date for our strategic planning meeting. We've got a facilities meeting coming up too that will need to be in December regarding, the RFP's done on our safety projects and the entrance and whatnot. So that's potentially going to be the sixteenth. Mike, I guess you're, it's important because you're in the chair. Just because they're going to be here that day giving them their roles.
December sixteenth or?
Correct, yeah. Okay, perfect. And I'll still note reminders and check with Matt about the twelfth preferably, the third as a backup for that strategic planning. Otherwise, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.
Isaiah? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thanks, everyone.